We're also adding item 5T, Resolution Amending the Budget to Recognize Funds Available Under 2021 Notes.
Council President, I'd like to propose just a one-word change to item 5F on the fly. In the exhibit, on the last whereas, it reads "six months," and that should be changed to "three months."
How many?
The number three and the word "three months." It doesn't match the resolution.
That's correct.
Okay. So we're basically just changing "six months" to "three months."
That's it. That's correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Move the agenda of the amendment.
All right. Do I have a second? All right. First by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Glavin. All in favor? Seven-zero. We'll now move to our presentation agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I want to read a proclamation. I'm going to ask our crack authors. No other one else? And this is Arbor Day. Do you need to do some background reading of the proclamation? Does your guess that the state of Mississippi...
Hello. All right, Eric. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion in our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are renewable sources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase property taxes, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our community. The National Arbor Day Foundation has recognized the city of Biloxi as a tree city for 35 years in a row, and now desires to continue its tree planting and preservation ways. Now, I therefore Andrew Fofo-Gilch, Mayor of the City of Biloxi, hereby proclaim the 20th day of February 2021 as Arbor Day. So, great job. And then I'll turn you over to make a very special introduction.
This year, the state of Mississippi has decided to... They're giving out their Arbor Day proclamations to the municipalities that do the most to help in urban forestry. And Misty Booth, who's our State Urban Forest Coordinator, and Meacham Harlow with the Forestry Commission are here to present you with the State Arbor Day proclamation.
Oh, cool.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. As Eric said, my name is Misty Booth. I am the Urban and Community Forestry Coordinator with the Mississippi Forestry Commission. And this is Meacham Harlow, and she is our partnership coordinator. National Arbor Day is always celebrated on the last Friday in April, but many states observe Arbor Day on different dates throughout the year based on the best tree planting times in their area. Arbor Day became an official day of observance in Mississippi in 1926. Later, the second Friday in February was firmly adopted as the day on which the state would annually observe Arbor Day. Each year, the Governor of Mississippi issues an Arbor Day proclamation. In years past, the proclamation has been read in our capital city of Jackson. But three years ago, an idea was put forward to have the proclamation read in a different community each year and have the original copy of the proclamation professionally framed for presentation to that same community. The city of Lucedale was the recipient in 2019, and the city of Oxford was the recipient in 2020. For Arbor Day 2021, Governor Tate Reeves proclaimed February 12th as Arbor Day and the week following as Tree Planting Week. Today, we will read aloud that proclamation here in the city of Biloxi. Whereas Mississippi has been celebrating Arbor Day since 1926 as a special day to recognize the statewide contributions of trees and forests, the state of Mississippi benefits from forestry, which contributes billions of dollars to the state's economy and millions toward education through school trust land timber sale revenue and employs almost 70,000 people. And whereas Mississippi's trees and forests provide jobs, tax revenue, school trust land revenue, wood products, energy, fuel, clean air, water, reduced energy consumption, outdoor recreation opportunities, and abundant wildlife habitats while slowing the loss of topsoil due to erosion. And whereas forest resources are sustainably utilized to enhance economic development, provide environmental benefits and educational opportunities, reduce the impact of pollution, and enhance quality of life for the citizens of Mississippi. And whereas, on Arbor Day and during Tree Planting Week, community partners, families, and friends join together to celebrate the benefits of trees and urban forests to recognize the unique beauty and diversity of our native trees, which provide a powerful and lasting impression on visitors and lifelong memories for residents. And whereas, trees will be planted statewide, creating a lasting legacy for future generations. Now therefore, I Tate Reeves, Governor of the State of Mississippi, do hereby proclaim February 12th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the state of Mississippi, and I do further proclaim Friday, February 12th through Thursday, February 18th, 2021, as Tree Planting Week in the state of Mississippi, and urge all citizens to plant a tree. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the state of Mississippi to be affixed, done in the city of Jackson on the 11th day of January in the year of our Lord 2021, and of the Independence of the United States of America 245th. Tate Reeves, Governor.
We're going to go this way. Rotate this way. There you go.
Have you got it? Have you got it right? Oh, okay. It looked like it. Where's your 37 years? Hold on. I've got one more piece.
What else you got in your pocket? We're so appreciative of this recognition, and we want to thank the Governor and everybody. You know, without trees, I couldn't climb out of a limb that I do every once in a while. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Got that? And this is also...
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Okay. Yeah. Little PR pitch. We're going to... On our web media, on our media and BTV, February 11th at 8:00 PM will be the state of our city. And I want to thank Cecilia and... And who's that other guy? Vincent? Yeah, Vincent. And everything is done, so I think you'll be pleased and proud of what we have to say and, you know, about... Not no predictions, but we're hopeful this year will be better than last year. So just everybody at BTV land, stay tuned. 8:00 PM, right, Cecilia? On Thursday. So I think that concludes my report, Mike. If I forget anything, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
All right. We have no departmental reports. We'll now move to our council reports. We'll start with Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a water line burst that served a couple of neighborhoods west of Big Lake Road the other night, and like 9:30 or 10 o'clock, it was noticed. Super Bowl night, Sunday. And the next morning, it'd been repaired and everything. There are boil water notices up for those five or six streets on the west side of Big Lake. But that said, I know that we had contractors, particularly on North Project or South Project, if they have ruptured water lines, they put door hangers or notices on residents' doors. Could we do that as well? And the reason I say that is there are several elderly people on those streets that they don't get out. They might not know there's a boil water notice there or see those. They're usually affixed to the stop signs at the intersections. But I'm thinking, do we do something like that? Maybe just a notice that, hey, you're under a boil water notice typically for three days and then maybe four or five days. If it's clear, just hang another notice, a green notice that says "all clear," or something like that. It's just, I know everybody doesn't... Older folks typically don't have the internet. They may not drive, and that's the only concern. They may not know to boil water for several days because they don't get out. Just a thought. Thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Newman?
I know what it is now.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I had a couple of things I wanted to follow up with the mayor, Mike. On the Jozette and Charles, the new restaurant, has anything happened with them? Are they still planning on doing both of those things tonight? Because they don't seem to be anything happened in the last four months.
Peter, I think they're in the middle of getting the renovations or at least the demolition for the two retail spots on bottom floor, right? And then the rest, 20 units or so of resident... Or the, you know, condos or apartments. I think that's the last plan. Peter, you have an update on that?
I just heard today that the progress seems to have slowed down. I told Jerry this morning I would follow up and see if it's delayed.
On both of them?
Well, the Magnolia, they have a roof claim, they have a Zeta claim. They're waiting on some insurance proceeds with Magnolia Hotel.
So do you figure... What happened with the other ones?
First I heard earlier this morning that there was some delay, so looking into it right now.
Just trying to... One, because a couple of people asked me about that during the week. I guess everybody's seen it. You know, the street news is pretty good, which the older streets is pretty accurate.
Them, the incentives that they would be collecting would be after the fact. So, you know, the faster they get it rolling, you know, the more incentive they can cash in on.
I noticed we got a thing today about the lights with the bridge, the Mag Bay Bridge. Is them not supposed to keep up with that, or what do we have to do with that?
Mag Bay Bridge or Ocean Springs, Biloxi, Black Ocean Springs.
All of them. I just need to have lights on. Just what's running? What's the problem?
Yeah. There is an agenda item on your agenda for today on the MOU for the Biloxi Bay Bridge, which is the bridge between Biloxi and Ocean Springs. So I think that will answer that question. As far as the Pops Ferry Bridge, that one is not an MDOT bridge. It's a city-maintained bridge, and some lights are still out. But last I heard, there was only three lights that were out. I'll follow up while we're here and get you an update. I-110 is the same problem. I said that's an MDOT bridge, not a Biloxi bridge. So they're still responsible for the lighting on the I-110.
Walt, I had a couple of calls on 1080 Division Street. That road is not finished there, running down Division, Two Forests, and by Porter. It's all tore up, sand everywhere, concrete's tore up. I mean, where are we at with finishing that? Everything else is pretty much seemed to be done around there except for in front of those houses.
Yes, I went out there with the Public Works Director, Billy Ray Allen, and he pointed out that was a cut-through service road for them, and we have it on the punch list for Oscar Rendez complete. Frankly, I didn't even see it on the maps. But when you called our attention to it, we went out there, and we have it on the punch list to be completed. It's passable, it's drivable, it just isn't new asphalt, but it's usable.
So you just got proof.
Yeah, they'll get it.
Move out the top one. There's nothing else to dig under the ground with.
That's correct.
Okay. Because I told my check on that to make sure. I didn't think it was.
Yes, sir. We'll get it.
Okay. And I guess we're not going to have Mardi Gras next week? So we have to just happy Mardi Gras and happy Valentine Day, just do all today?
I think the official holiday for our workers is going to be Monday instead of President's Day instead of Mardi Gras itself. So we've got a big weekend coming up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Demming?
Yeah. A couple of things. I know you just discussed bridges and lights, but the Pops Ferry Bridge and Pops Ferry leading up to the bridge is extremely dark. Who's responsible for the lights on that bridge?
City of Biloxi.
Can we take a look at them and make sure we get some illumination for Pops Ferry leading to the bridge and the bridge itself? I've had numerous constituents call me, and I've driven the bridge, and it's quite dark at night. Second, Mr. Creel, did anybody from your office get a chance to go over to Sunkist, Country North Sunkist, and look at the property that I sent you, that I wanted you to take a look at?
If they did, they just will break my attention, but I will check on it. I'll check on it as soon as I get back and give you a call.
Okay. Thank you. Lastly, without a Director of Engineering here, I guess I'll address this to you, Mr. Leonard. This is a sidewalk project on Sunkist. It's going well. Guys are out there working every day, and I appreciate that. I've had a couple of people mention it to me, and I've looked at it, and it's concerning that the sidewalk, they dig it out, is set so much lower than the grass. I don't know, long-term, if that's going to have an impact on the longevity of that concrete holding water during rain events and storm events, or if it's supposed to be that low. I'm not an engineer. I don't like sidewalks, so I don't know. I was just curious to know if you could give me some insight on the subdepth of the sidewalk concrete.
Well, the sidewalk should be at the same height as the dirt underneath the grass, not necessarily the height of the grass. Because if it's at the height of the grass, then the water will go the wrong direction.
So I use the term "grass." I should have used the word "ground." I know it's... I'm a layperson with regard to these topics, but no, it's not the grass that is growing up six to eight inches. I mean, you can tell that they dug out the earth, and the earth is like this, and then the sidewalks down here. So if you would just have someone, send someone out there, maybe Robert Smith or one of the engineers to run out there, just to verify that this is... That it's being done correctly. Again, I don't know if it's being done correctly or not, so I'm just passing along some of the residents' concerns and my initial impression as well.
Good.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Demming. Mr. Guns?
Yeah, someone just mentioned on Division Street, those guys came out and striped the rest of it, so it's looking very, very good. So Walt, I appreciate that. And just want to meet with you maybe next week so we can start closing out the fencing with the yards and things like that. Other than that, that's pretty much all I have. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guns. Mr. Glavin?
First, I'd like to extend condolences to the Bolton family and the Henley family and the Trosssett family. We lost some amazing people, and we grieve with those families in Biloxi. Second, I'd like to thank the administration on some work that we've been doing, reunion plays. I know I've mentioned in a couple of meetings about the fencing around a lift station. Seems like we're making progress there. Also, some traffic deterrents in Taylor Oaks. That seems to be progressing in the right direction. There are a few things that I'll kind of give to Mike, Mr. Leonard, so he can kind of put it on the radar. There's a drainage issue around Royal Street. Seems like possibly that the grade of the land is causing some drainage issues in the back of Residence Yard. We have a chicken problem, and I appreciate Mr. Creel giving me the... I guess that's the ordinance you gave me on the chickens. I'll get up to speed with it, but if we can get somebody to get some eyes on that area in the...
We may consult with Colonel Sanders on that one as well.
I hear you. I hear you. But to make sure they're in compliance with the ordinance, certainly. And then there's a rooster issue, and that may come under the, I guess, authority of the Biloxi Police Department for a noise... Animal Control for a noise ordinance issue. All right. Well, this is a first. You know, I thought Will Market had these issues. I didn't know it came down in, you know, Ward 6, but we'll get up to speed.
We'll connect the duck hunters with them, so we... Two problems.
Other than that, we've got some real cold weather coming, looks like this weekend, so everybody kind of button up, get prepared for that, make sure that we're taking the necessary arrangements to protect property and other things. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. I have just a few things. First of all, I'd like to say thanks. Mr. Leonard, I requested some lights on Timber Ridge, and I talked to someone who lived there the other day. He said they're great, so appreciate that. Also, the stop signs that were installed on Penn Oak, it has helped majorly with the speeding on Penn Oak, and so much so that I have people all in the ward asking for stop signs now. But it significantly slowed the traffic down on that road, so appreciate that. Also, wanted to check in on the status of the speed limit signs coming south on Shriners between Will Market Road and the roundabouts. Just trying to phase that down because hitting the roundabouts at 55 miles an hour is a little too much. And so if we can slow that traffic down and get those done. The park, two things. Number one, we have several areas that there's some bad erosion, and I don't know what the answer is, but if we don't correct it, it's going to end up affecting the walking track and washing it out. So I don't know who to call or whatever on that, but we need to do something before it ends up affecting the integrity of that walking track. And then second, I just wanted to check and see, do we have any kind of date on when we're... I know that we have talked about, you know, we have pricing and all that. Do we know when we're going to start on like the basketball court, the pickleball court, and all that?
I think we're still waiting for pricing.
On?
On the court, the basketball court. And the two courts will be done at the same time.
Okay.
Funds are there, so that's not a holdup.
Okay. And then the sidewalk project, do we have a status on that? I know that we had... That last I heard, MDOT was supposed to be finishing up on that.
Giving us our design back for approval, and then when we have that, and then at that point, we'll be able to go out to bid.
Go out to bid on it? Okay. All right. And then I think that's it. I just have a couple of questions.
If you would give me a little time afterwards, I'll talk you through the closure of Shriners later in the morning.
Yeah, that's another thing I was going to ask about. I know that we're looking at... Jason actually emailed me several things yesterday. I know that there's some options, but I have gotten multiple calls on that from businesses that were worried, so I'll talk to you about that afterwards.
I've gotten those same calls.
Okay. All right. That concludes... Okay. Go ahead.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
I apologize. Oh, my. I inadvertently overlooked a couple of things. The first was, if there's no one here from Public Works, Mike, the road delineators on Pops Ferry Road, south of the bridge near the Labonteire subdivision, they... Some have been run over, destroyed, and they're just missing their little nubs. If we could just get those, a few of those replaced.
Well, these are the traffic guides. Traffic guides, yeah. Okay. We've got some of those in stock. We ought to be able to get those fixed.
And then, and Sherri's not here. I'll give her a call. I wanted to... I don't know if any of you have any information about the covers at the Pops Ferry Dog Park. They were blown off in the storm. I don't know if we've got any budgeting to replace those or if we have any in stock, anywhere to put those, to put some back up.
I think they're probably handling all at the same time, the Hiller Park canvas and as well as the Point. Probably handle all that at one time.
Okay. Great. As long as it's on the list, I appreciate it.
Dog Park.
That's all I have.
George, you have something else?
Yeah, the police department's not here today, so I wanted to check with y'all. When this 5K run they had like last week that went down Highland Avenue, turned to Pine Street, a couple of businesses on Highland Avenue had to be shut down for two hours because of this run. And I wouldn't know if there's any way you can have it like one lane open so they get to these businesses. I mean, I don't know who sets it up, but the police department sets that, who sets that up for those runs? But he wasn't here. I was going to talk to him, but somebody needs to know because like, say like the Shell Station on Oak Street, he said the police wouldn't let anybody up there. So he said he lost over two hours of business. And right now, we don't need to be losing any taxes if we don't have to. So he just suggested if they just run maybe one lane open, when you get to those businesses on the south side of the street, and just, you know, make the running lanes up and down one side of Highland Avenue. And he said they've done that before, and it worked pretty good, so maybe you can go back to the original plan. But Saturday, they ran them down Highland Avenue, shut all the businesses down. So we don't need that, so...
Chief's on the way back from the...
Funeral.
Michael Blutay's funeral, and of course, they're going to Veterans and National Cemetery, so he's there.
We'll talk to him, Councilman. One thing is the amount of streets they close and the number of officers that they have to have out for these runs are related to each other. In some cases, you know, the more streets we don't close, the more officers that we have to put at streets to let people go across. Some of these... We had three races that weekend. That was a big impact on overtime. But we'll talk to the chief. And I know we've always tried to do this for the marathon, but that's one that... Trying to have somebody follow the slowest runner so that once they got to the past different streets, they could be opened up again. So they have to be a little... They try and be as aggressive as they can at getting the streets open back up. Two hours sounds like an awful long time for a 5K race, though. I mean, you could do a 5K running backwards on your hands in two hours.
Well, the business is a strain right now, anyway. We definitely don't need to affect them anymore. You said it costs more money to run it? Well, they lose money. That's taxes we're losing. So there's ways you can adjust these things. It's not a 5K run. I mean, this is a 5K run. It's not the 13 half marathon or 26 mile. This is... You know, it really shouldn't take that long, but like you said, they got people like me running things, take two hours just to walk there. So... But anyway, I just say there's no reason for us to affect businesses for two hours on a Saturday.
One of the things I think you're going to see, Mel and I have talked about this, and I've talked to this with chief too, and that is, we've got an awful lot of people coming to Biloxi, have races. And one of the things we've got to start doing is minimizing the number of city-sponsored races, and the ones that are not city-sponsored, they need to pony up to pay the police overtime and for barricades and so forth and like that. There it's... We're getting to the point of having just almost too many that we have to support with no money back. Now, the one that was done by the Motorcycle Club a couple of weeks... A week or so ago, the half marathon, they paid $500 for the barricades, and they paid for all the overtime for the police because we wouldn't let them have it unless they paid their share. So we've got to start doing that a little bit more often. And be careful about what we call a city-sponsored event, because when we say something's a city-sponsored event, that means the city's going to pony up a lot of in-kind services. Those are expensive, so we do that for Mardi Gras, we do that for other events, but we don't... And we do it for the marathon. But we can't do that for every little dinky 5K run.
No, we can't affect the business.
No more free beer.
It makes a big difference for these businesses. They're strained right now, anyway. So all we can do is help them. They pay taxes in City Biloxi. We need that big time. Thank you.
Okay. That ends our council reports. We'll move to our public agenda, citizen comments. We have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Each person speaking will be three minutes. Please sign in when you come to the table and state your name into the microphone. Do I have anyone on my left and your right that would like to speak? Anyone on my left and your right that would like to speak?
What are we supposed to do here now? You want to get the talk? Oh, wonderful. Well, I came to find out where I am.
This is our first code enforcement case, so he's here to represent it when we get to that on the agenda. He certainly can speak now, but just want to make you aware.
Okay. Could I ask you a couple of questions? I'm very honored to be here for the, I guess it's the...
I'll get it.
City Council of Biloxi.
That's it.
And you have a photographer, a reporter. Are these proceedings recorded?
Yes.
Excellent. I have to represent some violations of the code enforcement people. And I have to learn things. I did go to school for nine years, but I read the fine print, and they won't answer my lawyer's phone calls, these, what do they call themselves, community development people. And I'm here to represent myself, Laurie Seifert, who is the actual resident of the house and property in question here in Biloxi for over 20 years. I took over the house six years ago by... I took over the house six years ago by name, but you've got to realize what you're dealing with here. You're dealing with an old paratrooper who's a Coast Guard captain and lives out in the woods 50 miles from here with two horses. So I'm just informing you of my credentials. But thank you. Who do I address, by the way, when I do get to talk?
Yeah, we'll call you up to speak. Yes, sir. We'll call you up to speak whenever we get to code enforcement. If you don't mind, would you please sign in at the table? Sign the paper?
I have a long name. I also have a smartphone that I'm not smart enough to use. I need to put an address down? I have three, so I will put down the address in question.
We've got his address.
We have the address, sir. We're filling in.
Oh, good. Good, I defer.
All right, do I have anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to speak? Anyone on my right, your left? Anyone on my right, your left? Anyone in the back of the room? All right, if not, citizens' comments are closed. We'll now move to our policy agenda.
Resolution to grant final subdivision plat approval for Elsie Place Phase II subdivision.
I'll move it. We have a first by Mr. Glavine, a second by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion?
I'll just say a few words. Jerry, you can chime in if you want. This is the Elsie, new Elsie Drive Road that we've put in. There were some smaller sized lots or plats along this roadway. What we're doing is resizing those to three bigger parcels so we can move forward with the development of Arbor Apartments. And they can build these new apartments that is needed in the area.
All right.
That's up to you, Jerry. I think he wants you to speak on this. Do you want to speak on it?
I don't need to. They're basically collapsing the smaller lot lines.
They are collapsing the smaller lot lines for the commercial lots that Jimmy Lane had created when he started developing this property. Originally, he wanted to have some commercial development there, but he got approached by the Arbor Landing developers to sell it to him to build 174 apartment units in there. So they're just collapsing those lot lines that he had done originally. It's no problem. It's a good project.
So the 174 units, no problem?
Yes, sir.
No problem.
All right, any other discussion? Call for the question. All in favor, 7-0. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
All right, first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale.
All right, Mike, I guess you're going to break down now B and C. All to do with the bridges and the lighting, both of these things that tie in the same. B and C.
B Bravo?
B Bravo, yeah.
Be like in Brave.
Right, that, B Bravo has nothing to do with C Charlie. B Bravo is the final, accepting the final estimate from MDOT and authorizing the full and final settlement of all claims for the submarine cable project. So that's just MDOT, an MDOT document. We're accepting the final amount that we're going to be reimbursed for the submarine cable at the Pops Ferry Bridge. That's one of our oldest projects, which is now closed.
Do we have, on that understanding, was there a net gain, net loss? What do we, what do we put out and what are they reimbursing us?
Reimbursed, the final, the final share of the state's 80% match. That was an 80/20 project, so the state has got a 80% match. This is the final reconciliation of what they owe us that we're able to build.
This will essentially, we'll recover 100% of what they owe us, their portion.
Correct.
Thank you.
The Charlie or C is in fact the MOU with MDOT over the bridge lighting for the Biloxi Bay Bridge that we've talked about, I think, before. This is the agreement finally where Ocean Springs and Biloxi are accepting MDOT's proposal. As you'll see written in the MOU, proposal to replace all the lights with LED lighting and then turn over maintenance and repair to the two cities.
How much money are you talking about replacing all the lighting like that?
I think it's a $2 million project, isn't it, to replace all those lights?
It's their project. I honestly, Mel, I don't know what the number is, but it's, they're going to take the most of the rest of the year, I think, to get it done.
And the lace lightings as well as the overhead lightings, I think is what the plan is. Again, we expect with the replacement of the, you know, the more recent LEDs and we can put up about 10 years of maintenance-free lights, at least we hope. So that's, you know, I think we were encouraged by MDOT and encouraged, you know, for Ocean Springs and the city and Biloxi to come to an agreement on, you know, having lighting on that bridge because I think there's about 142 lights and over half of them are out.
Any other questions, Mr. Lawrence?
No, that's good. The next one is D. What, they had an amendment, D?
Is it Delta?
Delta, yeah.
D is in Delta? Okay, yep.
What are we doing here? They had to?
This is an amendment to the contract with Brown Mitchell and Alexander to design the Point Cadet Marina improvements.
And what they improved?
Project 1024 is a $5.1 million improvement to the Point Cadet Marina. That $5.1 million is made up of $3 million of Restore Act that's coming to us. In the meantime, using our own funds, we're doing the survey of the waters and the geotechnical requirements. We're doing the, what they call the soft cost design stuff, getting ready for the construction dollars to show up. That's probably a project, I'd have to guess at this point, depending on when the, we don't know when the Restore Act funds are going to show up, but it's probably a summer, the summer of 2021 project with about a nine-month period of performance.
About one-third of the docks and space will be floating docks. That's on the west end towards Margaritaville, part of the Marina. That's the project that we were.
Will all this lead to like dredging it up, the harbors up, dredging it up?
Some of it is dredging, but we've done a lot of dredging there. But you know, that whole east, I mean, west end of the harbor is going to be replaced with floating dock space.
And this is all, this is all a phase so we can go to bigger boat slips and stuff like that for the bigger boats?
Well, it's floating and can be configured however, you know, it's appropriate. Bigger boats now, even from last year, are, you know, I think the 50 or so boats that are committed to the Billfish, you know, are bigger, width and length and depth, so we've got to accommodate that as we roll through the project. But this is about one-third of that will be, will get us through one-third of replacement of some of the wood and some of the floating, or the structures that we have now.
We need more than like $30 million bikes that came last time, you know? And 90 footers and this all to come in and maneuver in that harbor.
Well, that's all part of the design. We asked for 18 million, we got three.
And on this thing with the key strategy?
Impact strategy, yeah.
Are we paying him up to, so you're going from April, May and June?
Yeah, we're going, this contract, we'll get him through the end of June, which is the season. You know, there's a lot of things happening in Jackson, especially in the House, but also in the Senate, as well as some of the relationships with the governor. So I don't want to say it's certainly, you know, the bang for the buck is there. And then again, what key impact strategy brings to us is some of the access that we're going to need, you know, from the maybe new infrastructure that may be coming from DC. We don't know. But I mean, we certainly encourage your support on this contract. And it's, you know, this, these services have really paid off, you know, in the last couple of years for us, especially when it comes to FEMA projects and the sangar and the outside the gate. So there's a lot of bang for the buck that we get with this contract. So I encourage everybody's support on this.
I guess the last question with this is, have you sent any update to the council? Does actually things they're working on confidentially, can you send us something?
I can, I can.
Where we at with some of these projects?
But.
At least we know.
You know, again, we have, we need a presence, you know, right now in Jackson, and he's providing that presence and, you know, but most obvious things, Go Mesa and Tideland. And then as well as some of the, you know, the applications for things that bond bill, trying to extend Pops Ferry across to Highway 90. He's active in those areas. I mean, it's not anything that we need to hide. We need somebody pitching our cause and case, and I think that's what this contract does. So I'll give you some details on where we are, but you know, my last conversation was actually, you know, what's coming up in Go Mesa, what's coming up in Tideland as well as the bond bill, so.
I think we'd all like to have that, you know, because I know Tideland, we never seem to get our fair share anyway. At least some of it, you know, we can't get it all. I know we put up 85% of the money, but I mean, we're not receiving anything close, but we should be getting for the City of Biloxi. You know that, Joe.
Bridging to the choir.
Even you know that.
I know that.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, is that everything? Tisdale, nothing? Any other discussion? All right, are there any exceptions for anyone? Exceptions? Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor of the consent agenda? 7-0. We'll now move to code enforcement. Mr. Crell?
The first item on the agenda, Martin L. Bowman III, 1621 Vine Street, and the property is still in violation.
Okay. Can you explain what's?
Okay, this came in as a neighbor complaint and the yard was just covered with debris, appliances, those kind of things. We actually took Mr. Bowman to community court over this, but when he went in to meet with the prosecutor, he refused to acknowledge that this was junk underneath there. He said that it was storm debris. And it was clearly old appliances and things like that underneath the carport that had covered it. There are some rotten sails around the window. And because the prosecutor couldn't get him to acknowledge that it was actual debris that needed to be removed or at least be moved inside or something. Typically, what happens when we don't have any success in court, then we will bring it to the city council for a resolution, but it was clearly not storm debris. So as of today, it's still in violation.
Okay. Anyone who would like to speak on behalf or against Martin Bowman at 1621 Vine Street?
Yes.
All right, please come forward. We already have your name in the book, Mr. Bowman.
Well, like I say, okay. Like I say, I'm trying not to violate too many protocols. Anyway, there, I do read the fine print. And we're not in violation of any of the ordinances that we looked up. So we were called to court and I was happy to go on January the 13th. Only there was no court. There was a diseased building called Auditorium here, which Laurie has pictures of some of the outside lack of maintenance and rot. And inside was a cramped room. I mean, very cramped, with a table like this with a plastic divider and a guy called a prosecutor with some kind of Polish Russian name sitting there. Well, we finally got in there after some delays and he came up with some pictures. And I said, well, you know, that was taken after 105 mile an hour wind with 137 mile per hour gust came through the area. And Laurie's mother had recently died in the house. And earlier than that, her son. And she has a job for over 20 years with certificates of accomplishments at Keisler. And she's been trying to do the best she can. I saved the house from her being evicted six years ago by using my name, which I'm happy to do. And, well, we looked up these codes and these so-called violations, and they were all lies. And I told the so-called prosecutor, he was the only one in the room. We were told we were going to see a judge. And I told him, I said, these are not true. And he got abusive and said things like, you're not running this show and this is the way it's going to be. And so finally, I stuck the charge sheet, which I have here, onto the plexilast dividers. And I says, I want to address these charges because I figured that's what you'd do in a court, is you would go down these set of charges and violations and address them one by one. Oh, he got all kinds of abusive, jumped up and said, if you say triangle of view, reading their own statutes, one more time, I'm filing criminal charges against you. I'm using verbatim. So you can guess what I said. I said, triangle of view, which is in the regulations, that anything that is not within the triangle of view, which is a view from the curbing and the driveway, is not under their jurisdictions. I have it right here in there, black and white. And so I said, triangle of view, and I want to address these charges. He jumped up and said again that he was filing criminal charges against me and tried to leave the room. But the counter was only this wide, the door to leave was right here, and Laurie was standing right here. And this guy's about six foot two or so. And he says, please let me pass, ma'am. And she says, well, you didn't address any of the issues.
I asked him to speak to me and he didn't even talk to me.
Well, he did. He said, again, this big guy is confronting her and he can't get past her. Laurie's pretty tough. She has a.
Ma'am, can you, ma'am? Can you also sign in and then state your name as well for record?
She will.
Can you sign in as well and state your name for the record, please?
She will. She's smarter than me. She's tougher too, as he found out. The third time, he said, please, ma'am, let me pass. And he finally had to put his back to the wall and slide around her to exit the room. So we never saw a judge or were able to address an issue, and this is a court. Now, we did hear when he was colluding with a lady, who we assumed was the judge, because it was a half wall, half glass, and this cramped, I mean, this room was only like this big.
Mr. Bowman, could, in the court proceedings, so nothing was done, is that correct, Jerry?
Less than nothing.
Okay, so nothing was done.
I could not call this a court.
Okay, so if you would, instead of, we don't have anything to do with that, so if you would address the violations, that's what this is for today, to give you the opportunity to address those violations.
I wanted to do this in what they called a court. Abandoned or junked vehicle, a total lie. And their representative, who's been harassing Laurie, was told this. This is a legally licensed, perfectly, you know, movable vehicle under its own power. And it says abandoned or junked vehicle. Well, I've got the definition here of an abandoned or junked or derelict vehicle, and this is a total lie. And he was told that. It's got an antique license plate, which is forever. So that's a charge. Now, when I was in the military, any deficiency on a charge sheet threw out the whole case. Repair or unfit of dangerous dwellings. Now, if you give the bad people enough rope, as my lawyer agrees, they will hang themselves. I have pictures here of this dangerous and derelict, uninhabitable, as they called it, uninhabitable building that she's been living and improving on for over 20 years. And they've threatened to cut off, I have the letter signed by this guy, Jared Creel, whoever he is, to cut off her utilities that she's been paying on for over 20 years. I have all this, if you're interested in seeing it.
Yeah, I've been living there since.
I don't, I don't know whether I'm in a court now or what I'm in, but I'm sure I'm with good people. And her doctor was pretty appalled that her utilities for the equipment that she uses under doctor's orders to be depowered. I mean, these are not nice people under my definition. I don't know what you would call them. I'm giving you the facts. Let me get back to this.
So is that all the, is that all of the?
No, no, we have more. We have accumulation of trash, tires, appliances, white goods, litter, refuse or offensive substance. I mean, this is a pretty, what would you say? I remember I did go to school for nine years, but I do read the fine print. This is pretty nebulous. You could, you could define anything under those kind of things. And of course, that doesn't exist. And everything was under a state of repair and has been, the place has been improved, in other words, even due to the hurricane damage that blew down the privacy fence that satisfied the triangle of view under the statutes of the city here. That's all been repaired. And then it goes even more nebulous, other. And they go to another, unlicensed vehicles, infestation of mice and rats. Can you believe that?
Some mice.
Can you believe that? Mice and rats. Where did that come from? There is nothing in the neighborhood pest-wise except feral cats and a coon that lives in the drain across the street. But it just goes on and on. And the fence, protective treatment, it's not even our fence.
It belongs to Hans.
It belongs to the next door neighborhood just built a brand new house right next door. So I'm a little more dazed and confused than I usually am.
These pictures are not even current.
Which pictures?
They are current after 105 mile an hour.
Those pictures are not current?
No.
No, they're not.
These are from yesterday. Okay, so let's.
Okay, let's look at the picture. There's a picture.
Let's do the.
My lawyer took.
Mr. Bowman, let's do this. I'm going to ask our community development director to, to answer a couple of questions. So could you, the abandoned vehicle dwelling, I know some of these things are all just bunched in. That might be the misunderstanding, so could you just?
Yeah, whenever we cite a code section, that code section has a title like growth, trash and debris. And so it may be that there might not be debris there, but we have to list everything out as a part of the charge on it. Now, the vehicle has been removed, that's why you didn't see it in the pictures. It was an old Suburban or something that had tape all over the windshields.
No, it didn't have.
Ma'am, let Mr. Creel.
Over the windshields, the, the trash that was underneath, the, there were gas cans with gas in them that were underneath this carport there. But the reason, the reason that we had a problem in court is because Mr. Bowman put up such a fight over there that the prosecutor couldn't negotiate with him about what to do. The way we have it set up is that the, the defendant, the owner of the property, comes in, sits down with the prosecutor in one room, and they talk about what's in violation and what it's going to take to get it corrected. Mr. Bowman came in there screaming that our people had fabricated all this information and that this was storm debris. And I held a picture up to him. I said, are you telling me that all this stuff under the court is, under the carport is storm debris? Yes, that's exactly what I'm telling you. So he was unreasonable, and the prosecutor couldn't, that's the reason we had to bring it to the city council, is because he couldn't do anything to write up a recommendation to take before the judge.
Okay, Mr. Bowman, you have three minutes to respond to Mr. Creel.
Well, none of that is true. And like my lawyer said, give them enough rope and they'll hang themselves. I have the pictures. I have the current pictures that they don't have. And I did go to court very reasonably and asked for these charges to be addressed, and they refused.
Mr. Bowman, we have someone who wants to ask you a question.
Actually, I want to, I want to start by asking Mr. Creel a couple of questions regarding the charging. The abandoned or junked vehicle, you said the vehicle is removed, so that's a moot charge.
It is now, yeah. It must have been removed in the last few days because it didn't show up in the, in the pictures. But this is, this is the picture that they referred to as that this was storm debris.
Right, I understand, and we'll get to that. The unlicensed vehicle, is that the same vehicle that was referred to in the, the charge for abandoned?
I believe it was. I'm, I'm not sure about that, but I believe it was, yes.
Okay, so that, I'm going to assume that it.
It's been removed.
Correct. So unfinished or dangerous property, can you define that a little better for me?
Well, that falls, that falls under the category, whenever you have, and the notes that I'm reading from the initial inspection that was done, is that within this area right here, they had gas cans stacked in it with gas in it. There was also a note in there about, about rats. And, you know, clearly, you can see that it's, it's trash and debris and, and things that could cause a fire combined with gas cans being underneath.
How do we know there was gas in those cans?
He checked it when he went out there.
I'm sorry?
He checked it when he went out there. I mean, whenever we're called with a neighbor complaint, our code enforcement officer goes out there to conduct an inspection. And he goes up and looks to see if there's anything in violation. And so when he did his inspection and checked it, he was made aware that, that there was gas in these cans there.
There was no gas in the can because that picture's not current.
Do you know of anyone who wouldn't have a little lawnmower gas in a can under their carport, not visible from the street?
Mr. Bowman.
But then, as it says in the regulations here, a triangle of view.
Mr. Bowman, if you'd give me a moment, I'll give you a chance to respond to all these. But if, if you'd respectfully allow me to have the floor right now, I'd appreciate that. But I will give you.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry to interrupt. I just found out that we're in Ward Four. That's how informed I am.
What is, what is the lady's name next to you? She didn't, she didn't announce it for the court, and I, I don't want to address you as ma'am. So if I could have your name to address you appropriately, I would appreciate that as well.
Well, my name's Laurie Seifert.
Ms. Seifert.
I've lived at this residence since 1989.
Thank you, Ms. Seifert. So, Mr. Creel.
I raised a son, and he, he had cystic fibrosis. He passed away.
I'm sorry to hear that, Ms. Seifert.
I took on my mother in January of 2020, and she passed away from congestive heart failure in the home. So I was pretty busy trying to take care of.
And that's understandable. We're going to, we're going to try to work through this so we can get this resolved for all the parties involved, okay? If you'd work with me here for just a moment. Mr. Creel, the unfurnished, the unfinished and dangerous property relates to the gas cans?
There was gas cans, there was an open shed on the property that was listed in the, in the, in the charges.
So if we can remove those gas cans and secure that shed, we would be good with that charge. Is that correct?
Well, yes, but we still have debris there, so.
Well, that is that part, we're just going to go down the charging list and, and try to help resolve.
Are you representing them today? Is that, are you representing them today?
Well, I represent, well, one, I don't represent them, but.
I understand. Let me just explain.
If you think that I'm here to.
We tried to negotiate, we tried to.
I get that, but apparently it didn't work. It didn't work at community court, so let's do it now, Mr. Creel. Let's get it done. Let's let them get some resolution and let them get on their way. So would that cure the unfinished building, the unfinished and dangerous building, if we secure that? And we'll get to the debris in just a second.
Certainly, if they remove the growth, trash, debris, the gas cans that are creating a problem, the things that are in violation, then certainly, that's the end of it.
Are you hearing this, Ms. Seifert?
I, I have contention with his allegations because they're, they are just that, allegations.
That's right. Well, we have some photograph evidence that, that supports the allegations.
We have the real photograph.
Mr. Bowman, if you.
You're looking at an outdated photograph. I took pictures myself, not only of my property, but of the property where we initially met. And I can show you right here some decay.
Wait, let me interrupt for a second. My lawyer came out and took a bunch of pictures.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
Forwarded them to Laurie's cell phone.
May I, real quick, with you, I got something to tap off from what you're saying.
Sure.
Ma'am, Ms. Councilman Deming, what he's trying to do is get to a resolution.
Well, I'm.
We understand what, what, what the allegations are, we understand what the charges are. And what, what he's trying to do is come to a resolution. So Councilman Deming is trying to say, well, you got a few things accomplished. Are you willing to accomplish the rest of it? That's what we're trying to get to. Are you willing to work with us to get those things taken care of? That's the question.
Okay. My question to you again is, according to the Fourth Amendment, one has rights and protection under the Constitution.
And we're giving you your rights. We're, we're giving it to you.
Well, then why does he come on my property?
But why can't we get to a resolution at this point? This, this is what we're trying to do. And if we can't find a resolution, then we have to make a decision. So if you don't mind, let's try to work together to get to a resolution. That was seen, that seems like the easiest thing to do at this point.
Okay, well.
Okay?
Okay, well, in going around the neighborhood, I've seen violations worse than mine. But I'm not about to go rat on somebody just because someone else's violations is worse than mine. What you see underneath, which is out of date, but what you see is what is normally under, you know, in the yard. You have a grill, you have a lawnmower, you have a gas can to field a lawnmower so you can mow the grass.
And we get, we get all of that. We get it all. But we have to, at this point, we have it there. It's like, we can't go out there and say, well, somebody else was speeding, why didn't you get that person that was speeding? That's long gone. Right now, the people that we got that are in court for speeding, we have to deal with that person. So right now, we're dealing with your case.
Okay.
So if you don't mind, Councilman Deming is trying to work with you to, let's go ahead and get a resolution. You said you have done some of this stuff already. Let's go ahead and try to get the things accomplished, and then we can move forward. If we don't do that, then we, the council, will have to be, we would have to make, make a judgment based on what we're getting. So can we work together to get it?
Together, if you would just respect me as a human being.
Okay, and we don't mean any disrespect. I promise you, we don't mean any disrespect.
This is malicious persecution or prosecution of someone who, you know, I do have a job. I have a husband now, and he's 75. He has, you know, I, he doesn't live with me, he lives in an apartment complex. I go see him every day. And the violations that were listed were egregious, in my opinion.
Okay.
And I don't see personally the, the table saw. I have that out there because sometimes I work with longer boards, and I cut them, and I can't have it inside the garage, but it's underneath, and it's protected.
Well, ma'am, I'm going to turn it back over to Councilman Deming, and if he, if we can work forward to.
But this is not.
If we can work forward to, if you can take care of those items, we are willing to hear you out and help out if we can take care of those items. Councilman Deming?
So, Mr. Creel, here, to make this easy, and again, I'm not representing them or the city, but I want to find a resolution. What is it that needs to be accomplished? I know the fence. Can we determine if the fence is theirs or the neighbor's fence? That would remove that charge, I would assume.
We can, we can check on that, yes, sir.
The one that, so what we have really, the, the biggest issue that I think we have is the accumulation of trash and debris. I think that's the one, even when we talk about the, the unfinished and dangerous property, the main component of that is the debris and, and the, the accumulation of stuff.
To you, it's stuff, but you don't know what I'm going to be doing with that, that lumber. You, you don't, you didn't even ask me.
Right, but does it look like that currently?
No, it does not look like that.
When did you change?
I've got pictures.
Mr. Bowman, Ms. Seifert, when did you change that? When did you? That picture was taken yesterday from what I've been informed. Is that correct, Mr. Creel?
You can see the date at the bottom of the picture. It was taken yesterday.
So since yesterday, has that changed?
Yes, it has.
Since yesterday?
Since yesterday.
Okay, so.
What since yesterday? What was that?
Is there any way to?
They asked me if that picture changed since yesterday. Yes, it has. And my question again is.
But it's not, it's right here. It has to be within the triangle of view.
Well, if the fence was blown down, it's clearly in the triangle of view.
Well, the fence is up.
I'm a licensed and practicing attorney. It's called the, it's, it's the plain sight doctrine. If you can see it, it's within that triangle of view. It is. Well, if the, if the privacy fence was blown down, you.
They illegally entered the property to do, to take a picture.
That's something, that's, that's something to address in a different court. We don't have jurisdiction over issues like that. Would it be fair to say, Mr. Creel, that if they did this, if we adjudicate this matter today and give the authority for community development to take the action or the plan of action that they request, if this stuff was done, there would be no action taken, and there would be no charges addressed to their, to their tax rolls?
That's correct. And that's what we always try to achieve, is to get the owner to clean their own property up rather than for us to have to go in and clean it up.
So, Mr. Bowman and Ms. Seifert, do you understand that?
I, I understand that I was in court to address the charges, and there was no court.
And I apologize.
And I apologize to this august body for this gentleman wasting your time with his illegal actions.
Mr. Bowman, please keep your voice down.
I apologize. Which John Wayne said was a.
Mr. President, Mr. Bowman-
In the world to do that.
Mr. President, I'm-
In one of his movies.
I think this is inappropriate. I would ask that we conduct this like we normally do during our-
Mr. President, I recommend that we, we move forward, and if they get, if they get it done in time, it would be no-
So, what we'll do is we're gonna court-
I also, I have arthritis, and I do, I'm 58 years old, and I do the best I can. Okay, I've been diagnosed with RA, so I'm doing the best that I can.
And they're gonna cut off her utilities to have the letters signed by this Mr. Creel right here.
Your utilities are not gonna be cut off.
According to him, they are. It is.
It, that is a blank, that is something-
I have everything I said here. I have a document to back up. He doesn't.
Okay, how about this? We have two weeks until our next meeting. If, in two weeks, let's, let's move this for two weeks. If in two weeks, these, this, everything on this list is not resolved, we'll bring it back up and we'll close the case, and we'll give the city the opportunity to do what needs to be done to clean the property.
That's fine.
The table is for two weeks.
Okay, so we're gonna table it for two weeks and allow two weeks to get the, to get this resolved. And in two weeks, it's not resolved, we'll close the case, in which that time, the city will move forward with getting someone to take care of cleaning up the property. And that usually takes about how long, Jerry?
It usually takes us about 30 days just to get the bids and everything.
So, you're looking at 45 days that you have to get this corrected, and so, at this time, we're gonna vote, or you-
Well, I got a question.
Ma'am?
He moves, I second it.
Ma'am?
I wanna know, I wanna know, what is a person-
I'll move, I second it.
What is a person-
Ma'am, okay.
What is a person allowed to have on their own property, under their garage?
Okay, so what we're gonna do, what we're gonna do is we're gonna move on in this meeting from this case. One of us will talk to you after the meeting, if you wanna stay around-
Yeah, I'll stay around.
And tell you what you need to do to rectify the situation, okay?
Okay.
All right, all right. So, we have a first, and we have a second. Do we, all in favor? I have, yeah, all in favor. Okay, 7-0. We're, we're moving from this case. We'll talk to you after the meeting. Mr. Creel, item B, please.
Can you please direct this person to answer my lawyer's phone calls?
Okay, we will talk to you after the meeting, okay? We're moving on to the next case. You can move back to your seat, and someone will speak to you after the meeting. Sir, we're moving-
My time is not valuable. I get paid to take people sailing as a captain, and I apologize for this gentleman taking up your time unnecessarily.
Okay, sir, this case for today has been tabled, and we're not gonna discuss it anymore. If you will, please go back to your seat, and someone will speak to you after our meeting. Thank you.
Happy to do so. Thank you all, and I'm sorry to waste your time.
All right, is there anyone here on behalf or to speak against Adam Davis, 870 Ellington Drive? All right, if not, this case is closed. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against Extended Stay LLC, 590 Beach Boulevard? All right, this case is closed. All right, we have a first from, or a motion to move by Mr. Guns, second by Mr. Glavin. All in favor? All right, 30-day extension, 7-0. Next item?
He's moving them. I'll move it for 30 days.
30, okay. Do I have a second? I'll second it. All right, we have a first by Mr. Guns, second by myself. All in favor? 30 days, yes, man. 7-0. Next item? All right, do I have anyone here to speak on behalf of or against TTL BLLC, 163 Briarfield Avenue? If not, this case is closed. Last, last item? Is this a lot that you can see from the road? Like, just, okay. Okay, and they've never done anything? Okay. All right, anyone here on behalf of or against Kathy S. Wells, 10439 Will Market Lake Road? All right, if not, this case is closed, and that ends our code enforcement hearings. We'll now move to our routine agenda. Do I have a motion? So, moved. All right, we have a first by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence. Do I have any discussion? Mr. Lawrence?
Buddy?
Could I? Can I bring something to your attention, Councilman? In the docket, there are three payments that you should note. The first, on the first page, there are two payments to Crowder Gulf LLC, Zeta Debris, $871,609.77. Crowder Gulf, Zeta Debris, $670,545.13. And on the last page of the docket, there is a third payment at the top, True North Emergency Management, Zeta Services, $168,668.0 cents. These are the first three payments that we're making, using the funds that we borrowed, the, the emergency borrowing funds from People's Bank, the credit line of credit. They add to a million seven. We'll be walking this document over to the bank later this afternoon. It's, is the first draw. And the checks, unless I'm mistaken, will go out by Friday to those three. And in the last week, we've had a very successful meeting with FEMA, and they have agreed to put our debris removal project at the head of, head of the line on our Zeta effort. And so, we, we are very positive about being able to be able to turn this money very quickly in, in FEMA terms. Quickly in FEMA terms doesn't mean tomorrow. It means maybe in two months. Anyway, this is the first, this is the start of our paying off the debris removal, of which, you know, the, the total's $4 million. I just wanted you to note that because there was a couple of pretty big bills there.
Thank you.
Mike, $4 million, that's everything that we removed after the Zeta?
That's everything that was removed by contractors. We also have debris that the Public Works Department has, has picked up over that time, and, and all the trees that were leaning and cut down, that community development took care of. So, all of that will probably add to about $5 million.
Some of that has been paid through force account labor, internal uses of that, so there's a process. Work with time and, and Diana about what's gonna kick off the, you know, pay for things with, as the debris removal contract, you get the check, the cancer check, make the application for reimbursement from FEMA with the cancer check. And then the other kind of, would be the force account stuff, the stuff that Public Works has done, Public Safety has done. And, and that's another set of plans that will be starting to pay for through normal salaries and so forth, but we designated what they were working on. BP 211 was the Zeta contract, so that's another process that will be there for this work. As Mike stated, this is the first of the process of drawing money, paying the Zeta, then application for reimbursement when the, immediately when it's returned from, from FEMA, we'll be paying that in line credit. We won't be spending, as I said the other day, $10 million. That's what we could spend. But hopefully, as we receive reimbursement, pay the gratifying.
The other question, is Pelican Kay now responsible for people cutting them trees and bushes and limbs and putting them all on the streets? So, Pelican Kay will pick that under a normal contract now, correct? I mean, right now, he's, we're finna with the contractor. So, if somebody cuts a tree up and puts it on the street- But Pelican Waste, we pay them to do this, so that's just part of the contract now.
Well, I'll give you an example, Councilman.
On weekends, they will visit those, those debris piles that were, you know, before the storm would pick up. So, there's a little bit more of that. They're, they're bagged up, and then they're normal self-generated debris coming on the, helping it out.
I'll, I'll give you a good example. This, this week, a resident of Ward Six approached the councilman from Ward Six and says, "Why didn't my stuff get picked up?" Well, his stuff didn't get picked up because he put it in front of a vacant lot. The Pelican Waste people will not pick up from a vacant lot. They only pick up from residences. So, it defaulted back to the city to take care of, and it took a few days, but we took care of it today. So, you know, we're, we're working a long list with our two or three trucks and Public Works. But a, a, as your residents target, get, get to you about something that's like that, you get it to us, and we'll, we'll get it on the list, and we'll get to it when we can.
I mean, you take an empty lot that's property owned by somebody that pays taxes, the city blocks it. What do you mean, you don't-
Yeah, but here's, here's the thing. When this, when the contractor bid that job, I, I-
I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the contractor.
When we asked that contractor, Pelican Waste, to bid the job, we said we had to set a, a standard that they bid against, and it was 13,721 houses. That's how many residences we had asked them to pick up from. They gave us a price. So, technically, they are not responsible for picking up somewhere that's not a residence, because that's all they bid was residences. Now, they have been pretty good about picking up stuff, especially if it's blocking streets and things like that. And, and we've got trucks, and that's, that's our job then to get those. Everything from spare tires to debris that got put in the wrong place.
All right, thank you.
Yes, it was Mr. Tisdale first. Second was Mr. Lawrence. All right, do I have any other que, I know Walt has a microphone back there, so did you have something, Walt?
Yes, as far as reimbursements, today, we received another $2.97 million from MIBA, and we have about $605,000 in the pipeline.
All right, thank you. All right, any other discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor? 7-0. Do I have a motion to recess?
Second.
Mr. President, I'd like to close in memory of Ms. Della Macan. We lost Ms. Della Macan, my marine biology teacher, who taught many of us except them Notre Dame guys.
All right, well, we have a motion by Mr. Guns.
I'd, I'd like to add to that, if you will, and, I mean, I just heard also, we lost Ronnie Elia-Terris as well. So, Ronnie Elia-Terris, Butch Henley, Brandon Trossasette, and Buzzy Bolton. Like, that's, I know that's a big list, but-
L U.
L U. L U, I'll tell you.
Okay, so we have a motion from Felix. How do I do this? Is that a second? Dual motion by Felix, Mr. Guns, and Mr. Glavin to close in, what was his name, and a second by everyone.
No. L U, Ronnie, Ronnie L U, L U Terrace. Yeah, Bobby's not dead yet.
All right. Brandon Trossasette.
Brandon Trossasette, yep.
Okay, and we have a second by everyone, all in favor? All right, 7-0. Resess.
I'll work on, I'll work on getting you some info.